Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this post-agenda meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Wednesday, February 2, 2023. I'm Councilman Kraus. I will be chairing this afternoon's post-agenda meeting. We are meeting today with the LGBTQIA+ Commission. Members will be joining us as their schedules permit, but for this moment in time, I would like to introduce those that are with us here physically present in the chamber, and then we will also identify the members of Commission that are joining us via Zoom today. But Billy, if I can start with you, may I begin introductions with you? We'll pass it down the line.
Sure. My name's Billy Heilmann. I'm a Commissioner on the LGBTQIA+ Commission, and I'm the Secretary of the Commission.
And we go back...
Many years.
1988.
At least.
1988. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of years there, a lot of years. But no, it's a pleasure to have you. Is this your first time at the council table? I'm not sure.
No.
No, I didn't think so. Right, yeah.
And other issues.
Yeah, I thought so, yeah. Please.
Lenny Orbavich, Commissioner with the LGBTQIA+ Commission and a teacher in the Pittsburgh Public Schools.
Thanks, Lenny. Maria?
Maria Montano. I'm the Communications Director for Mayor Ed Gagne, and I'm a member of the Commission.
And Billy, would you please, since my eyes will not permit, would you introduce who's joining us via Zoom today, please?
Yes, and then maybe they can...
Yes, please.
You know, unmute, but I'll just tell you who I see right now. So Sue Kerr, one of our co-chairs, is present. Denise DeSimone, our treasurer, is present. The Guillermo Velazquez, I saw him trying to log in. I don't know if he successfully has done that. If anybody can assist him.
Mr. Richard.
Guillermo is present. Richard Parsakian, Commissioner Richard Parsakian, is present. I believe that is what, who I've seen.
Okay. Billy, thank you. I was trying to read text, which I can't see with my eyes, but seeing face is, faces helps tremendously. So Sue, may I start with you? Would you unmute and introduce yourself?
Sure, I will. Thank you, Councilwoman Kraus, for chairing this meeting. I'm Sue Kerr, and I am a Commissioner, and I am currently one of the three co-chairs of the Commission.
Denise, can I go to you next, please?
Sure. Denise DeSimone, I am, as Billy said, the treasurer and part of the Commission.
And Richard?
Yes, Richard Parsakian. I am a Commissioner, and I was also on the former Advisory Council, the Mayor's Advisory Council, before this Commission was organized. Thank you.
Yep, Richard, thank you. I'm losing sight of pictures. Did I...
Guillermo Velazquez.
Guillermo? Yep, there you are. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I am Guillermo Velazquez. I am also a Commissioner, and on my everyday work, I am the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Hispanic Development Corporation. My intention is to represent the Hispanic community in this Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. Pleasure to have all of you with us. I recognize that this time the Councilwoman Strausberger, hello again, is joining today, and other members will join as their schedules permit. How best would you then like to, how would you like to go through the agenda? What do you think serves the highest and best purpose here? Sue? I think she might be frozen.
Are you recognizing me?
No, I'm just wondering out loud what, how would be best to go through the agenda in front of us and make sure that we hit all the points? Would you be okay, since Billy is here in person, if he could perhaps introduce the agenda step by step, and then we'll take comment from everyone present as...
Yes, I think our original plan was for the co-chairs to present, but since I'm the only co-chair here, I think it would be perfectly fine for Billy to take on that role.
Okay. If things change, you'll just let me know. We will remain flexible and fluid, making sure that everybody gets their opportunity to, to present, okay? Then Billy, do you want to start?
Yes. So our, our first agenda item is titled, as you've seen, because we've presented the agenda to you, "What is City Council's Vision for the LGBTQIA+ Commission?" We've attached our mission and vision statement, and hope that you've had an opportunity to read it, but they're short. They're on the third page, the agenda is the first two pages, and then on the third page are our mission and vision statements that we authored and are incorporated into our bylaws.
You're welcome to read them both, so they become part of the public record.
Oh, I would be happy to.
Yep, please.
Okay, so, "Our mission: The Pittsburgh LGBTQIA+ Commission advises the mayor, city council, and other city government departments on issues pertaining to the Pittsburgh LGBTQIA+ community. In addition to advising city government on legislative, administrative, and budgetary decisions, the Commission acts as a resource to create dialogue by elevating LGBTQIA+ voices and advancing communication between the LGBTQIA+ community and city government. Our vision is: The Pittsburgh LGBTQIA+ Commission envisions Pittsburgh as a healthy, safe community with equitable access to employment, housing, education, quality health care, social services, public facilities, and businesses for all residents and visitors, regardless of sexuality, gender identity, or gender expression." So that's powerful, in my view, and we, because we know the, the history of this council over the years and recently, that we are not expecting that you wouldn't be fully aligned with what we wrote, so, but we did want to have a discussion about that, at least briefly at the beginning, if council members wanted to comment on, on their view of the mission and vision ours, but also to offer anything that, you know, that they would say in addition to.
So I'm here to serve as a conduit, even though I'm a member of the Commission, I'm here solely to serve as a conduit, and I really would like to turn over as much time to members as possible to be able to, to, you know, interact, relate, and, you know, express what you would like to do to, to members of council. If I may just sort of begin with the idea of, I can't think of the word, I want to just evaporate it from my head, city code as it relates to discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations. You have firsthand history with that when, back in, is it 1993? If I remember the time correctly, you were an ad, advocate, I can say that, that placed that policy or the law on, on city books here as it relates to discrimination on housing, employment, and public accommodations. Would you like to talk a little bit about the beginning of that and how we...
Certainly. I mean, it was 1988 that the Pittsburgh Fairness Campaign, in, working with council member Mark Pollack, put forth a bill to add sexual orientation to the city, the city's anti-discrimination laws, and it failed in 1988, but it, it passed in 1990, and it was successfully defended in 1991. So that's the time period it does. The issue of gender identity was addressed also in the 1990s.
That was '93.
Yeah.
Gender identity expression.
Couple of years later than that, but it, but it was in the mid-1990s, and then it was reaffirmed more recently.
So the reason that I, that I just bring that up is to...
That councilperson, Strausberger, I think you know a good deal about also, yes.
I just bring that up to just mark the rich history that Pittsburgh has in terms of recognizing LGBTQIA+ people and, and providing for protections, and, and as it relates to housing, employment, and public accommodation, and sexual identity and expression. We have a very rich, long history, and that was the only reason I wanted to get on that road and say that, but I'm going to turn it back to you and our guests.
Yes, well, so this item is really also to hear from council also. I mean, we've, we've presented ours, but if there's other Commissioners who want to comment on, on this first item, it's, it's open to them.
Well, I'll conduct the hearing anyway, or the meeting anyway you wish to do. We can go through the agenda in its entirety, and then open it up to members for question and comment as they see fit, or we can go through it piece by piece, whatever you decide you'd like to do.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Hopefully, other council members will join us, too, the, if, if that's the case, but I'm, I'm fine with going through the agenda, the, so, the other thing, and I really don't want to be the only spokesperson for the Commission, so what I'll do is, I'll just pass it to Lenny, and then Sue, I mean, you're one of our co-chairs, please, you know, raise your hand and, and take the reins as you choose to, but I'll hand the next one if, if you don't mind. So it's presenting and reviewing our Commission, Commission goals. You know what? Let me pause on that. Let's ask Denise. Denise was instrumental in holding working groups and organizing our Commission to specifically address Commission goals, and on, after the page, which is the third page of this five-page document, the, the fourth and fifth page are our Commission goals. They're dated for 2022, but they're alive today. It's just the, the date is because that's when we first adopted them, but Denise is here, and she knows them well. I'll just point out that the numbers in them are mapping them to your legislation regarding your charge to us when you created the Commission. So when you see the numbers on pages four and five, it's to map, and those seven items that are directly from the legislation are on the last page. But let me turn it over to Denise, because she's the expert on this.
And so before we do that, just, I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilwoman Kraus and Councilwoman Warwick, and to remind all of those that are joining us digitally, please don't feel that you need to be called on. If you feel you have something to offer, to share, please feel free to unmute your mic, enter the conversation. It really is more of a conversational platform here than it is anything else, so please don't think that, don't wait on me to, to recognize you. If you truly feel you want to contribute to the conversation, just unmute, and please join us, and Councilman Wilson has also joined us as well, so thank you, and Billy, back to you.
Yes, and Sarah Rosso has joined us. She is one of our co-chairs also. She just recently...
I see Sarah.
...logged in, so she's here to...
And Derek Tynes has joined you as well.
Oh, and, and Derek. Derek, Derek Tynes, while...
In that fabulous black fur coat.
Let's let both of them introduce...
Yeah, please.
...themselves, so Sarah and then Derek, perhaps.
Hello, everyone. Thanks so much. Excited to be here. I am one of the three co-chairs, with Sue for the Commission, and outside of my role with the LGBTQIA+ Commission, I also serve as the Executive Director of the Hulane Wellness Foundation, and a lead of the Health and Youth Committees for the Pennsylvania LGBTQ Commission. So thanks so much for making time. Really looking forward to build that relationship with council.
Thank you, Sarah.
I am Reverend Derek Tynes. I am a longtime advocate of LGBTQI reality here in Pittsburgh, and serve as a representative to faith community, have worked with the Equality PA as a board member on a statewide level, and have also been on the council with Luke Ravenstall when he created the LGBTQ Advisory Council. It's a pleasure to be with you today.
Thanks, Derek. Billy, back to you.
I think if Denise is willing, I would turn it over to her.
Denise, welcome.
Thank you, Billy, and thank you all for being here. When we set out to put our goals for the Commission, we wanted to, one, make sure that they were achievable and attainable goals, and, two, we wanted to make sure that the overarching principles were adhered to from our bylaws. So the first goal was, the first category that we wanted to touch upon was outreach, and in that really, we defined those goals as to make sure that outreach efforts are accessible to all persons in the LGBTQIA+ community. The goals that we felt were important to achieve here was to, you know, to create a working group to identify the opportunities, strategies, and activities for outreach, and, two, to create a Commission group to identify our constituencies so that no one is left out. Understanding and outreach to our community is what we thought was, is primary to the success of this Commission. The next thing that we wanted to do was to be able to align ourselves with the community services that would help our community. So we wanted to organize meet and greets so that we could meet members and city departments, and we wanted to work with these departments to ensure that, that we had the right infrastructure within the city to help our community. And then we wanted to really understand the community as a whole. We want to understand what the needs are in the community, and what we could do to help facilitate a stronger community. So after many months and thought, we, we kind of pared it down into these five goals for our 22, 2022, now 2023 Commission work. Does anybody have any questions?
Could we, let's complete the agenda first and then open it up to members. I think we'll, we'll have a more successful conversation if we put it all out there, and then we'll open it up to members, okay? Would you want to, do you want to go next to the duties of the Commission? How do you, how would you like to proceed?
The, so the next item is summarizing our accomplishments, to report, to report to you some things that we've, we've been doing and have, have done. So that's what, on the first page, the, that we've listed as accomplishments in, in item four, and so I'll just go through them, read them for the record. I will note at the beginning of this that there is, there was participation by many of our Commissioners in all these things, but I am going to say, you know, a special call-out for Sue Kerr, because she really was, on, on many of these, the driver of bringing them to the attention of the city, of the Commission, and others, and was, and that's instrumental in, in what we've been able to do. But the, so our, we're proud of, we're proud of all of these. We're proud of the, the painstaking and deliberate work that we did to adopt an organizational structure, to develop bylaws, looking at many different structures from across the country for LGBTQIA+ Commissions in other cities, as well as the Commissions that exist in the city of Pittsburgh. But we did one thing that was a little different than any other Commission that we've seen. We have three co-chairs, and we have three co-chairs for a specific reason, and that was so that our spokespersons, because our co-chairs are the spokespersons for our Commission, they're being very generous, letting me speak this much at this meeting, because I'm the Secretary, not one of the co-chairs, but the, but the, the reason for it was to make sure that our voice had as much diversity as possible, and to make sure that intersectionality was central to what our Commission is about, because the, the issues of race, gender, as well as gender identity, sexual orientation, and other aspects of being a human being are equally as important. There is no hierarchy in, in that aspect of any work for, for justice. So that is why we built that specifically into our structure, and we're very proud of that, and we hope that, that can be recognized, and that when we do our work, we always make an effort that we are embodying that, that principle. So you'll see that if you take the time to read the many statements that we've issued, and in fact, we will collect them and send them to you, so that you have them in one place.
Very helpful.
Yes, so the other thing, and I won't take so much time on each of these as I just did, but that one is important. The, we've advocated for plumbing code changes to support all gender restrooms and businesses. This, we've done this both at the county and the state level. We'll, we'll send our communications in that regard to you also. We condemned the, the July 1, 2021, post-pirate game concert by a transphobic, homophobic, racist, musical duo that turned the event into a, and we turned the event into a very positive relationship between the Commission and the Pirates. So we didn't just condemn the Pirates for their mistake. We've had, we've had, and by the way, we had a very important meeting, I think Sue can comment, she was, she's been the lead on this, on how really important the meeting that we had yesterday, and how productive it was with, with Pirate leadership. The, the next one, we've advocated for the Oakland Pride Senior Housing being built by Presbyterian Senior Care. Kathy Boyle was the lead on this, Commissioner Kathy Boyle, and she wrote a wonderful letter requesting support from city government. Commissioners, as Commissioners, not necessarily as the Commission, have advocated for Northside Trans Youth and her family, who were being harassed by their neighbors, and we know that councilperson Bobby Wilson was very, very helpful, very sensitive, very supportive, extremely important that council was involved in that, councilmember Bobby Wilson, and, and Sue Kerr was instrumental in that, too, but we're very proud of that work. We've challenged the public health officials in indecisive response to the 2022 human monkeypox outbreak, and we'll send you our statement on that, and we condemned the vicious, all of you are aware of, because you've spoken out about this, too, and we appreciated it so much, the anti-transgender radio ads that were aired by eight local radio stations, and was, and we were a part of a wider effort that led to the removal of the ads by seven of those eight stations, and one of our Commissioners, but Sue was involved in that, too, but Lenny Orbavich, to my left here, who works with GSAs in Pittsburgh Public Schools, was one of the persons who first alerted the Pittsburgh Public Schools to the fact that one of the radio stations was airing the ads, was also going to broadcast the city championship football game, and that their plan to just not do the ads near that broadcast was not enough, and he and others said no, no to the compromise, the compromise wasn't acceptable, and so, as you can see, all, all of our Commissioners have been involved in, in each of these. There are others, too, but, you know, we, we didn't want to brag too much in our short life, so we're limited there. But if anybody who's been a part of these things wants to speak now, I think that you should take that opportunity.
Please do. Don't be shy.
Well, is it okay if I jump in right now?
Yes, please do. Please, don't wait.
Okay, I'm Sue Kerr, and thank you, Billy, for all that multiple mentions, but I, I want to also be very clear to say that a lot of this comes from various conversations. Our ability to support the family in the Northside and launch a huge counteroffensive, you might say, that also started with Lenny, who saw, someone sent him a post on Facebook, and he passed it on through us, and we were able to respond, so I think our relationships that we've developed over the time of creating our bylaws and the structure and all that have really generated this kind of momentum. Regarding the Pirates, I do want to just update, we had a meeting yesterday, we're going to be meeting again in a month. They've asked us to sort of serve as like an advisory, an advisory role, and I was really impressed with how much they've accomplished...
Absolutely.
...since we last met in the summer of 2022. They've done a lot of work, and they're very committed to changing the culture, to be more, not only welcoming to, to guests, but to create a safe culture within their 700 employee workforce for them to, to come out. And then, as we had that meeting, I read the news that a minor league player on the White Sox came out, and so that was interesting timing, and I, I really think the Pirates are well-positioned, you know, that there's work to be done, but they seem very up for that, and I'm really pleased that, I think that's going to bode good things for, for the future.
Sue, pardon me for interrupting, but I think it's important that we also acknowledge the amount of training that the Pirates have done with their staff, and the, and highlight the important role that the Hulane Foundation has played in facilitating those trainings. They've done great work.
Well, Lenny? We, the Pirates were also among the first to respond to the anti-trans radio ads. We contacted them and the Penguins, both of whom responded, and because they, their broadcast partners were running these ads, and those ads were pulled. And what I, what I take out of all the training piece, the ongoing training, the, the meetings with us, and all the other things that they've committed to, is just the sense that they are clearly not just a one-night-a-year Pride Night ally, that they are doing work all year-round, and that's very commendable.
Sue, thank you. Billy, do you want to continue? There's just a little bit more on the agenda. If we could put that out for discussion, I'd like to give council members an opportunity to be able to interact with, with members as they see fit.
Yes, so the, so item five, obviously, this is more of a request, but, but, you know, we just wanted to put on our agenda this statement, a commitment from council to do what it can to ensure that the Commission has all the supports necessary to fulfill its mission. So I think that one, you know, that, that's on you, but...
You have that commitment.
Yeah, but, but we will have, you know, our ongoing relationship will, I think, be able to manifest that.
So let me step in here for just one moment, because that really was the purpose of this, this meeting, or this post-agenda, in my mind's eye, was to introduce the face to the name to the, to the member to have personal interaction and connection, which makes it so much more meaningful, you know, to work collectively and cooperatively to accomplish the goals we set for ourselves, and so this is only the first of many steps, which I hope that this is really just the planting of a seed that will build relationships that will last for years to come. How about number six, Billy?
Sure. So number six has multiple, you know, subsections to it, and so I'll just go through them and read them for the record, and then, you know, we can decide as we develop this relationship, what, what, these items we can, we can tackle. Maybe there's one that we want to discuss in some detail today. That's open for all of us, but, but these are the things that we thought of in our brainstorming session that was sort of done by email, but the, you know, we collected this in prior to this meeting. So A is, "Understanding of how city council invites LGBTQIA+ community input on all matters, not simply LGBTQIA+ related items and bills." B, "Development of communications between the Commission and city council as a whole and its individual members." "Input drafting formal Pride Month proclamation to include many activities, celebrations, and organizations, as well as the larger LGBTQI+ community. This does not preclude proclamations for individual events or groups." "Efforts to ensure that city public places, such as city parks and pools, are safe and affirming for LGBTQI+ persons, including city employee training." "Notice of vacant police liaison role and civilian public safety liaison, they are distinct, and that the Commission has addressed these, this with the administration." "Commission, city council engagement on LGBTQI+ representation on city boards and Commission, and discuss a possible city council-commission partnership to address anti-LGBTQI+ legislation in Harrisburg."
Billy, thanks. Before I invite members in to participate, I want to give anyone that's joining us digitally to make further comment on, on what was just offered up in terms of the Commission's request of council, and I'll be happy to take that comment now, and then I'm going to turn it over to members to interact. So do I have anybody joining us via Zoom that wishes to, to register right now? Okay, so I'm going to take members in the... So I'm going to take members in the order in which they came. So I'm going to go Councilwoman Strasburger, Gross, Warwick, Wilson, right? Well, it's a Wilson, isn't it? I can, I can, I can never resist. So with that, may I open it up to you, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first want to thank each and every one of you for your service. I'm guessing that if you're serving on this commission, this is not your only volunteer, your volunteership. I'm sure that you're serving on many other boards, whether or not they're city affiliated. So thank you for your service on this one. I know it's probably a significant amount of time and energy that you put into it. And I have two main, two main questions. I might have some kind of, some of them might have multiple answers from different people. But when it comes to, I guess it's, I guess it's the outreach portion of the commission's work, but it also fits in elsewhere. To Mayor Ganey's credit, he and his administration are thinking of issues and by extension, commissions and even task forces intersectionally. You know, the LGBTQIA+ Commission intersecting with the Gender Equity Commission, intersecting with the city-county task force on disabilities, right? Like, so I'm wondering how, what discussion has occurred among commission members about that potential to say, even work together on advocacy that might not seem to affect your group or mission, but by boosting what they're working on or boosting their advocacy effort and then, you know, feeling some reciprocity when it comes time to advocate in Harrisburg or wherever, city council, for your agenda, you know, there could be some great partnership there. Not to say that it only has to be like volunteers coordinating with each other. It also, it also extends into, you know, your partnership with various city departments and offices. Just curious what discussion you've had there. And this might be a better question for Morgan, too. So I don't know if Morgan has joined us, but.
I know that Morgan has joined.
Okay. And I'm happy to have that conversation offline with Morgan as well. So if, if the answer is, you know, let's regroup and discuss more, that's also an okay answer.
No, I think, you know, jumping in here on this, yeah, I think Morgan would be a key person to, to bring into this conversation at some point. But broadly speaking, like more, I think Morgan's position and her role is really to do just that, like finding those intersections and those opportunities for us to engage with each other. And broadly, the idea of the administration that the work of the LGBTQIA+ community and the commission shouldn't just be the work of the people who serve on this commission, right? But really, how do we diversify our membership across every commission that we should do, right? It's things like looking for, you know, disability advocates to serve on zoning and planning commissions, right? Because that's a voice that deserves to be heard in that moment, right? So when we're talking about, about the various intersections where our voices need to be heard, it's about finding opportunities for members of our community to be able to do that. So just because you're a member of the LGBTQIA+ community doesn't mean you should only be able to serve on this commission, but you should have a voice in all areas and avenues of city government. And I think that's one of the things that the mayor's done, both in setting up his, his administration, but also his broader view on, on commissions. And I think having Morgan, who has served on the Gender Equity Commission, who has done a tremendous amount of work in, in that, in her life beyond city government, is really a key player, being able to sort of look for those intersections for us to come together and partner where appropriate.
Yeah, and great point. It's not just about issues and advocacy, it's about representation as well across, across the board. Great. My, my second question comes out of meeting with the OWLS, the Prasad Center's older, wiser leaders. Maybe there are members here who have, who have also attended that group, but they had such great questions and thoughts and ideas that, one, it would be wonderful if there could be some coordination with the commission and commissioners or commissioners plus Morgan, you know, visiting as they gather for coffee during one of their, one of their sessions to, to hear them out and to hear some of the things that I heard. But it was questions ranging from, you know, what can we do to work better with public safety and police in all regards, but especially when it comes to, say, concerns stemming from, there were some very specific concerns, like as late night, as late night restaurants or bars were getting out, public safety around, you know, the downtown area, other concerns around, you know, even how we're working with our healthcare system and what, what role the city might have to play there, and working with our health, health partners and making sure that they're sensitive to the needs of LGBTQIA+ community. And so, I mean, those are just a couple of examples of, of notes that I took and things that I have been meaning to follow up with, with commissioners about, with you all about. But even better could be, you know, us all going there together and meeting. Another great thing was intergenerational connection, right? So this acknowledgement that they're there and they really have a desire to meet with younger LGBTQIA, you know, youth, and that that needs to happen, that those conversations need to happen. So this seems like it could be a really natural point of making those connections through you all.
I'd like to respond to that.
Please do.
Counselor, if I may. One is that we very specifically have been working to address the vacancy in the police liaison role to our community. That's been vacant since April when Commander Holmes left to move to a different department. And we understand that there's a liaison in the Department of Public Safety. And one of our concerns has been that we've repeatedly tried to contact Acting Chief State Recy and Director Schmidt, and we haven't had any success. So we are trying to establish the mechanism where we can have those conversations around safety in a broad sense, as well as the specific issues that you brought up. And hopefully, we, one of our needs maybe today is to ask city council to help us to advocate so that we can get that, those emails responded to. They haven't even been acknowledged, much less, you know, addressed. And I do also want to make sure that we talk about the fact that there are multiple LGBT groups serving elders in our community. I know Hugh Lane has a group, there's the Primetimers Group, there are some, a lot of informal groups. So I think it would be important that we're talking with all of those folks who, whose interests may overlap, but may have some differences as well. Sarah may have something on that as well.
Yeah, thanks, Sue. I think that those are great ideas to find ways to connect and hear from folks in our community who have concerns. But to Sue's point, we know that there are lots of groups. And I think like building some knowledge around all of the different advisory boards that are made up of LGBTQ folks that impact, you know, DHS services or health department services, as well as, you know, senior advocacy groups, youth advocacy groups, there are youth advisory boards. And so I think really being intentional about how we connect with all of those and hearing from all of those voices in community is a really smart thing to do.
So I am happy to take that responsibility on, and I will commit here publicly that I'll create the, the connection between the commission and Public Safety Director Schmidt to make certain that that position is filled. Okay?
And to the point of many different groups, thank you, and thank you for that check. And, you know, so noted. And absolutely, yes, like I mentioned one, but there are so many other boards and task forces and advisory boards and groups out there. So absolutely, thank you.
And I'd like to add to that, that hopefully it becomes an awesome, incredible task, because so many of us will be serving on so many capacities in the Pittsburgh area.
Are you good, Councilwoman?
Yes, yeah, all finished. Thank you.
Okay. Before I go to Councilwoman Gross, just a reminder, anyone that's joining digitally, if you feel the need, please just open your mic and join the conversation, okay? Councilwoman Gross, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. And I apologize, I have to turn sideways to see your faces. So hello, I can see you if I turn over this way, so forgive me if I'm not looking at you. It's very awkward. I look like I'm looking at you and I'm looking at the camera, but I actually can't see your faces, so please, but the chair can see you on another screen, so if you are waving, the chair will let me know. So, and thanks for everyone to be here in person as well. I've heard a couple of things that I wanted to kind of follow up on, and what's sticky in my head is that notion of capacity and the staffing and that Morgan, who isn't with us today, is both going to be staffing this commission, but also the Gender Equity Commission that I sit on. And then maybe to follow up on some of the people's points, it's like, is that, you know, we'll be needing feedback, I think, right? And we're open to feedback about like, well, is this adding capacity or is it feeling like there's not enough capacity in to do your work? Because we're just changing how we're doing this. So I think we'll all be interested to hear. I mean, there's definitely been public concern that, in one sense, it's taking the staffing of the Gender Equity Commission down from a full-time to a part-time position. But it had been part-time before it was full-time, so I think we're just going to be feeling that out. And so we're really open to, to hearing about that. So please consider, you know, reaching out with feedback. And then I, to follow up on the conversation we were just having about needs in our elder community, I, when I've had these conversations with advocates in the past, what really stuck with me was both needs around housing and around care work, like senior care, right? And the particular needs in our LGBTQIA+ community in Pittsburgh to add both services and spaces. So when I see in your agenda, like a request to include feedback on kind of all-city policy work, that's what jumped into my mind. And has that been part of your conversation? So it's going back now before COVID, but it was like, you know, part of senior reality is sometimes needing assistance. And so we rely a lot partially on publicly supported, but sometimes not publicly supported caregiving. And it's a real, I think it's an area where we could do better in the city, and you might have heard me talking in the past about how we can support childcare services better. But in my kind of policy career, if you figure that out, it's very, very similar to other kinds of assisted caregiving and senior caregiving, right? That you've got people usually who are doing the operations who are really good at doing the care work, but maybe not so good at the business side of their care work. And so how do we grow those businesses and kind of create a supportive environment as the city regulating in the places that we regulate to, to grow the capacity in the system? Thoughts? Anybody have any thoughts? I have to turn to the side to look at the screen again. Is that something that you're hearing?
I think in general, that's something that we're, we're hearing broadly speaking, knowing just the demographic makeup of Pittsburgh and Western Pennsylvania as a whole, right? In the term of the need for senior living and, and the care that comes with that from a healthcare perspective. I think that's one of the things that we did note in our.
Sometimes caregiving is in, in your own home.
Right, yes.
You haven't like moved to a specific living facility.
Absolutely. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there to partner with local home care providers around that, to do some, some training. I think there's opportunities there for workforce development training. And I do know that there are a lot of members of our, of the LGBTQIA+ community who are active in those, in those roles and in those, in those positions. That is a, just part of that demographic at, at a whole. But I, but I also think, you know, just lifting up the, what we said here about advocating for the Oakland Pride senior housing that is currently underway and being built, right? Because that is a very critical need for the community as our community continues to, to age. That's going to be, you know, much, much more needed as it is for a variety of communities across the city. But definitely, you know, finding ways to, to work with our, our home care networks and other healthcare providers in the area to talk about what that looks like to provide culturally competent care for our community, especially, I just think a lot about barriers to access for trans care in general right now, and what does that mean as our population is surviving into the future now? Like, what does it look like for our care as we move into those, into those places and those positions?
Right. If you have like a home health aide, is there the same kind of cultural competence that we're talking about in a medical industry at large?
Yep.
Right? That's great. So.
Let me add to that, because, let me, let me add to that, because I am dealing right now with three seniors who are needing care and they're being moved from a facility. And so I'm having to, kind of in my pastoral role, but because they are men of color and they are queer, it's been a challenge, part of the challenge right now is finding that kind of care in home. And so there's no kindred care, there's no, there's no next of kin for these individuals. And so, you know, I can't bring everybody home to my house. So, you know, one of the things that we're dealing with, I run a organization called UHIMWAY, which is a group of black men in the city of Pittsburgh. And so the goal is now trying to wrap services around these three people from within the group, you know? So this is really a conversation that I hope that we can find the capacity to, to bridge the gap or to build a bridge, because I also wonder about our capacity as a commission to actually respond in a way that we need to with support, with resources that sometimes seem to elude us, to really get and make the impact in our communities like the way we know it needs to be made. But that this housing and this healthcare is a huge, huge deal, even, even more so for people of color who continue to be disproportionately affected by everything. And I'm, I'm disappointed that Ricky Burgess and Robert are not here, because we always seem to be missing from the conversations and from this, when it comes to this work. And I'm going to address them about it. But I, I just like to, I hope that our ability to actually be a resource to our community is empowered by this meeting and by this partnership with the, with the council.
Great, thank you. I would, I would love to continue the conversation.
Could I add something, Deb?
Yep, see, I didn't see you. Sorry, Sue.
No, that's okay. I have a really good hand thing. It's unfortunate Kathy Boyle could not be with us today. She's our commissioner who, Kathy has done extensive work, training. Sarah could probably describe it better than I can. I know that she's done a lot of work over the years, going in and working with the home care providers, different kinds of institutions, whether it's a residential community or in-home community, and helping raise the bar in that regard. And she also brought forward the housing issue. So I think she's really at the, at the intersection of those two particular pieces and probably has more knowledge than almost anyone about how those two things work together and that we could charge her or maybe perhaps bring us all up to speak on what we need to know and what we can do. Sarah, is that correct? Is she still doing that in her current role?
Yeah, she is. Kathy's been working a long time to help improve outcomes in the senior service system and is part of many of the broad advisory boards that exist to improve outcomes for LGBTQ seniors, but also beyond that, just improving outcomes for seniors more generally in our region. And so she's done a lot of cultural competency training and continues to do that.
And let's not avoid saying it explicitly. When we say improving outcomes, it's because the conditions that exist now are unacceptable. It's because, as Reverend Tynes just said, there are people who, in their last years, are being discriminated against in multiple ways. And Kathy has, and Reverend Tynes have, have the examples through their, through their experience of really horrific treatment in our city right now of older people who are in their final years, who are on the edge of being homeless, and they don't have the, the way to advocate for themselves, and they don't even have the way to access advocacy. So improving outcomes is talking about that, and we need to remember that. And we need to remember that, even though in this conversation, that's the way we would put it. But yes, we have to include Kathy and also other people too. But she is on our commission specifically in that role and as identified in the legislation that you wrote.
Thank you.
This is Guillermo Velazquez. I'm also commissioner. And besides being a commissioner, I am the executive director of the Pittsburgh Hispanic Development Corporation. We are a community and economic development agency. And we do have a housing program. And within the housing program, we do see Hispanics that also happen to be LGBT members of the community. And by the way, the Latino community is the fastest growing in the city of Pittsburgh. And so you have to take in consideration several factors about this community. Many of them, specifically for the LGBT, that they come from somewhere else, whether they come from another city or state or another country. Eventually, they settle in Pittsburgh. And these people do not have families, relatives or children. And so they're all by themselves. Plus, they have the fact that, you know, trying to adjust and be here. So there's also this advantage there culturally for some of the members of this community. And we're trying to serve all of them. And this is where existing organizations can work with other, with the city, with other initiatives that can be going on to address all of these matters for these types of members of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. So I've got lots of names here to follow up with. So I do think that this is an area where, again, we can do better. We can do better, right? We know that we're working on affordable housing across the board and that we need more, especially for our most housing insecure people who, as you mentioned, you know, could be on the verge of homelessness themselves.
Write down Marcus Robinson also.
And Marcus Robinson?
Because Marcus, our co-chair, his role on the commission is specifically related to housing.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Can we just also add in your notes the gap between a person who's being put out having to then find a place?
Much harder.
Because the big, because the other issue, I had to stop the nursing home today from putting out this person today and say, wait till tomorrow when we can get the lights and the gas turned on to where they're going. They were literally going to put them out today. I had to actually like scream on the phone. But there's a gap between, like even getting the services. So people are doing work, people are quitting housing, but getting people into those housing, applications, you know, finding stuff that they don't, they can't find that they need, don't have social security cards, don't have all that paperwork.
I would not know where my social, I don't know where my social security card is.
Yeah, so I mean, so this is, I just wanted to just put that out, you know? So it's just not housing. It's the process of getting housing. It's the process of identifying these people who are in between the cracks. You know, a lot of these people don't show up at our agencies or don't show up at church or don't show up in the meeting, but they are literally in crises. So, I mean, this is a really much larger issue than just, you know, care and housing. It's really, as Guillermo was saying, there are people who don't have connections with family and don't have that. So, I mean, we really do have a problem here that needs to be addressed. So I just wanted to add the little gravy.
Absolutely. Thank you. And even if you're not facing, even if you do have social safety nets, even if you do have some current housing security, you know, it's hard, you're hard pressed to find anyone to do in-home care work.
Yes.
At all, for anyone, right? And so we really do have, I think, a policy problem that we can maybe not have 100% of the resources for, but we can do better at doing what the city capacity is to help, just like we do in any other kind of economic development or any other kind of community development. Care work is work and our citizens need care work and we can support it, just like we support other kinds of work. So I think we have, I have a lot of energy for this topic. So I'd be happy to talk more.
Can I interject again, one more thing? Counselors, just that we also have LGBTQ folks who could do care work, who could, would like to do care work, who are doing it unpaid and have for decades. That's who, you know, we all are familiar with the amount of effort that went in during the AIDS crisis in the eighties of individual people stepping up and doing that work. But the employers have to be affirming and welcoming and create environments where those individuals aren't having to go back into the closet to earn a living. And so there's a disconnect, I think, there that it's not just about providing the care. It's about our whole community being a really good resource to recruit qualified, interested, experienced caregivers and making sure that they're not being left out of paid work that could help save someone's life because of their identity.
That's good.
Thank you. I'm writing that down too, Sue. I appreciate that.
Richard had his hands up.
So again, Pittsburgh has a history between Pittsburgh AIDS Task Force, which is now the Wellness-
Allies.
I'm sorry.
Allies.
Yeah, thank you. And also the Shepherd Wellness Community are both organizations that have reached out historically to people who are in need through a buddy system or social events that help with dinners and all of that kind of thing. It was like an unpaid thank you to our community because we knew there was a need out there. And everything came from our community first, even being recognized that the AIDS crisis was not a thing. We recognized we needed to reach out to our community ourselves. We are the organizations that helped our community first before the government even recognized there was a crisis.
Right, right, right.
So, but these were all unpaid workers and they are still out there doing that work. So I want to recognize those leaders that took that initiative 30, 40 years ago, including Persa, of course. And now Hugh Lane is doing this work. And so I want to recognize these organizations that have stepped up. But we do have a history of helping ourselves.
And add Pittsburgh Black Pride to that. They have been, they do a summer thing, but they've always been about community and caring for the community.
I took so many notes. I think there was a third part to my question, I think I said, but now I've completely forgotten it. But that was a really wonderful discussion. So thank you for that. And I think I'll just leave it there, Mr. Chair, because that was a really helpful discussion.
And we'll come back to Councilwoman Minifits, necessary, okay? Councilwoman Warwick, welcome. You have the floor.
Yeah, thanks. So thank you, everyone, for being here. I really appreciate it and for all the work that you're doing. I do want to start by saying, I, you know, I'm so impressed with how well the Ghanai administration is doing. It's just made really incredible strides, right, in creating and inclusive and inviting city government, both, you know, outwardly for the public and inwardly here. It's impressive. And also the work, of course, that Councilman Kraus and other councilmen are new, right? But that you have all done over the years. So just to acknowledge that. I guess the one thing that I, just sort of from my own personal, the things that I'm interested in on a personal level, perhaps it's just as a parent, is I notice a lot of the work that's being done to support LGBTQIA+ youth. And that's wonderful, right? Of course, we need that support, those protections. But I'm also curious about, or I guess I should say, I, as a parent with kids in Pittsburgh Public Schools who use City Park rec centers, I'm also a huge fan of city parks, by the way. That's like, you know, I feel like there is an opportunity. Well, again, our youth as a whole are really evolving, I would say, just in my experience interacting with young people. They're really evolving in how, you know, in how they understand and experience and accept, you know, the LGBTQIA+ community. However, I have to be honest, as, you know, I have 10-year-olds and I've been at birthday parties and games and heard, and it's, we're not there yet, right? We're not there yet. There is still a lot of this messaging floating around that I can remember from when I was that age, you know? So with that in mind, I would love to see, just, you know, around, you know, in the same way that we have so much around Black History Month and other, you know, and Lunar New Year and all these things, I'd love to see in October and in June, more across the city. I mean, in Pittsburgh Public Schools, of course, where we see, I mean, it's national, there's an attack on schools and dealing with this kind of education. But I think as a city, and also at Pittsburgh Public, but certainly as, since we are the city, there's a real opportunity to expand that, you know, when it comes to, whether it's events or celebrations or, you know, whatever that may be, certainly through city parks and also in hiring our city park staff so that these are the adults that the kids are interacting with. And also, to your point earlier, in, even in like our Stop the Violence programming, right? There, I would like to see, I mean, one thing in particular, I've spoken with a few of the organizations. I'd like to see more work with young women and girls, but it would also be nice to see work around LGBTQIA issues because they're, of course, affected. Anyway, I sort of wanted to hear what you all, as a commissioner, are thinking about this and sort of thoughts for the future. And maybe there's things you're doing already that I don't know about, so.
I won't speak on behalf of Lenny, who works in the schools. But, you know, PPS does, I think, a lot of really great, solid work around these issues. And I was lucky enough and honored enough to be asked to have been their keynote speaker at last year's gender diversity summit that they do every year where they bring in their GSAs to learn and grow there. And, you know, honored to have been asked to do that. So I think there are those opportunities that PPS is doing on a regular, ongoing basis with their students, especially students who are members of our community. And I think you're right. I think there's a ton of great opportunity for the city to uplift and celebrate pride in a lot of big ways. I think there's ways that we could partner with, you know, special events, which is now under city parks, which I think is fantastic, in order to be able to do some of that sort of special event programming inside of our parks around broader celebrations of the community in June or in October. So I think those are some tremendous opportunities that we have to come up with and think about how we do that. But also, you know, again, I'll just like to plug the fact that we are always looking to hire a variety of positions here at the city of Pittsburgh. And, you know, I think you go to the PGH Jobs website and look up there. So if you are a member of our community and you want to serve the public, I would encourage you to apply for a job at the city of Pittsburgh. We've got, you know, great benefits for the community and you get to be able to work with kids or help plan events or work with the administration, with all of you all, to really make this a Pittsburgh where our community is represented everywhere.
I'd like to express my disappointment with the Stop the Violence efforts. We, they had a RFP that went out last year. And I know not just UHIMWAY, who I, which is my organization, but we also work with NEED, the National Educational Emergency Fund, drive for students. And so we had a, we specifically submitted applications to support people of color, queer, who are men and women who are either trying to go to college and need extra supports or address partner violence within the LGBTQIA community. We specifically addressed this population. And we were, of course, several people were rejected, but we got no response at all to that. And so it was a little disappointing because I know that not too many people are openly seeking to address, you know, LGBT people of color in our violence efforts. Because it's a real, of course, there's the shootings, but there's a lot of other stuff that happens that's violent that needs to be addressed. And so I was a little disappointed with that. So I just want to put that on the record. I was disappointed by that.
Councilwoman, you have the floor.
I think that there's probably a few other people that want to jump in here as well. But one of the questions that starts to emerge in thinking about how we can strengthen our relationship across city departments and entities is really just, how do we figure out ways in which information is shared so people know what's happening? And that seems to be a recurring theme. And I really appreciate the idea around like, what is happening for youth and thinking about what's happening globally and locally around policy initiatives, what's happening in school spaces? There are lots of events that happen during Pride Month and that happened in October around National Coming Out Day and Spirit Day. And those are actually events that get permits from city parks with the city. And those events happen at various parks. Pittsburgh Black Pride is one really great example of that happening historically through the years. And so I think those events are happening. There's a youth and family focused pride event that happens in the park. And over the years, you know, events have sort of shifted in and out of city parks. But part of it is, if people don't know, they don't know how to connect, they don't know how to participate. And so I think more intentional efforts to share that message and make sure that a broad range of people are invited and included can go a long way to help get the word out so that more people know how to access the resources that exist. Because of course, there are lots of youth resources. There are school, GSA-based resources. I really want Lenny to have some space here to talk about work with PPS. But there's also lots of supports for caregivers, right, that can help them navigate those conversations and challenges. So there's a wealth of information out there. I start to wonder, how are we connecting people to things that exist or to organizations or entities in a more comprehensive way?
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, so Councilwoman Warwick, thank you for bringing up the issue of youth supports. So most of my work is obviously through the Pittsburgh Public Schools. I'm a member of the district's Queer Equity Committee and I sponsor the GSA at the high school, Carrick High School, where I teach. So, I mean, we do have a lot of supports in place. We have a very progressive trans policy that supports the student's gender identity, their facility rights, name rights, pronouns across the board, confidentiality. We're also required to have support teams in every school to support LGBT issues and to address them as they come up. And as Sarah brought up, more and more schools are starting their own gender and sexuality alliances. We're not, the hope is to have them eventually in every, at least, high school and middle school, if not K through 12. And we're getting there. More and more are started every year, but it's still a work in progress. So, yeah, I was intrigued by your mention of city parks and greater engagement with them. Because as I think about it, like a lot of, I know for myself, my youth work has been within the schools and the kids have a bigger life than that, obviously. So, yeah, I think that would be something that I would like to have more conversations around. Thank you for bringing it up.
Another thing too, I would, so just to say, as a councilperson, sometimes, well, I only speak for myself, but sometimes it, well, I should also say, the PTOs, at least, I have very good relationships with the elementary school, in particular, PTOs in my district. I was just sort of the nature of the age of my kids too. But PTOs are a great resource, right? For organizing events that is, it would not necessarily be, it's, they're at the schools and they're attended by everyone at the schools, but they can be supported by the city or by whomever, right? Because they're just 501(c)(3)'s. But I would like to say, just as a, in my experience as a councilperson, there's so much going on, right? You've got all the constituent, whatever. I would really, please, if there are opportunities, right, whether it be district-specific or otherwise, please reach out, right? Like, let us know because we're there to help. But sometimes there's just so many things going on all the time that it's like, we may not think, oh, you know, oh, right, I need. So if there's an opportunity, please let us know, write to the office. And, you know, we will have a meeting. And I'm very much into sort of bringing, you know, if it's like, oh, who could I work with on this or that? Well, maybe I know somebody, you know, in the district and can make those connections. So please, reach out anytime. Thank you. That's all for me.
I'd like to add something with the parks. And issue that's come up many, many times over the years is this swimming pools, and which pools are safe, not only for youth, but for adults and particularly individuals who are gender non-conforming, non-binary. The pools are very gendered structurally, in terms of bathrooms and locker rooms. The pools are very gendered structurally, in terms of bathrooms and locker rooms. But there's like an informal, you may not know that this happens, but every year on the queer lists, people start talking about where the good guards are. And they go there because they know those guards will look out for them and take care of them and keep them safe, and respond appropriately. And Polish Hill is a constant good pool that people will go to. And then, you know, there are other pools that don't have such a good reputation. And so it's a very informal network, sort of like what Richard described before about taking care of ourselves. But really, anyone going to any pool should feel safe, should be able, not have to deal with being told to take your t-shirt off, because it doesn't fit the requirements for attire in the pool. And the t-shirt is very essential to somebody's security and safety to swim in the pool, and lots and lots of issues around this. But we, it's just, it's just been going on for so long. And it's almost like people have given up that the city is going to do something about this. And I'm not asking for a policy suggestion right now, but just that this is an issue that may seem small, but it's huge for people who don't have a lot of choices. They can't afford to go to North Park and South Park and go to the wave pool, or have a way to get there. And they don't go to their community pool, they go to another community pool because they feel safer there. And I would just wanted to put that on the table, because I think it's really important for council to look at that and give it some consideration.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, because actually, it's, again, this is where like the council role, because lifeguard, you know, the need for lifeguards, that's something I'm very interested in. And I've, you know, reached out to Alderdyce Swim Team and etc. So that seems to me, I mean, we hire lifeguards, we train lifeguards, that's what we do. That seems, that seems like a fairly straightforward solution, is just to train our lifeguards on, you know, come up with a matrix, a list of criteria of things that we need to be aware of. I mean, again, I understand, but it sounds simple, so I feel like that's something that we can advocate for.
Yeah. So I would also like to do two things here. I think, one, just as like a reflection as a trans woman in society, whose greatest joy in life was the first time I got to swim in a pool, when I felt comfortable in my own body for the first time. That was what I liked, just like floating and just felt so perfect and beautiful. So the need for that kind of space for everyone, I understand on a very personal level, because it is important, and it is sort of scary, and wondering, like, what is it like as somebody who is, you know, a trans woman in society? Secondly, we are just starting lifeguard recruitment for this year. So there's going to be a lot of stuff going out relatively soon about the need to get lifeguards. So as we are talking to our GSAs, and they're looking for stuff to do over the summer, wouldn't it be great if we got a bunch of great LGBTQ youth, their first summer job with the City of Pittsburgh is to be a lifeguard, and then they got to help make those spaces inclusive for our community, right? So I think when we talk about the work of equity in our city and what it looks like, it means, like I said earlier, not just sitting around being on this commission, but being a lifeguard. It's that way you're able to be there. But also, yes, we want to provide adequate training as the city. That should be our role and our responsibility to provide that type of training, to make sure we're creating that space to do so. But also, like, we should go for those jobs to where we can make those spaces. You know, sometimes it's about, you know, pulling up not just a chair for ourselves at the table, but building the whole table for ourselves. So I think this is an opportunity where we could partner with PPS and the swim teams and the places that we know. Like, let's do some recruitment from within our community to be lifeguards, so we can be like, hey, we know we've got members of our community who are at this pool, or are lifeguards at that pool, that will look out for us.
Don't forget the community college had GSAs and the campuses that have LGBT groups.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wanted to add that, one thing that we can do, and I really appreciate the talk about city lifeguards, because I was a city lifeguard. And you're not, you might be surprised, I was a lifeguard at Fifth Avenue High School, Paulson Pool, and then also Canard Pool, which is, that pool's not there, neither's Fifth Avenue, but also Highland Park Pool and Leslie Pool in Lawrenceville. And the, it is so important that we do this because also with these earlier things, these earlier comments about Pittsburgh Public Schools and its very progressive trans policy and other supportive things, our young people don't live in a bubble inside that policy. And the things that are happening across our country are affecting them. And the, you know, the high rates of suicidality among LGBTQIA youth, and also now increasingly queer children of color, that it has been increasing at a higher rate in the last several years. That's happening here, too. And the thing that all of us, including the things that Lenny has been doing, is that it's so important that young people, trans, queer, other LGBTQ young people do, is that they get to play, that they get the benefits of socialization from interacting in a playful way. And the 300-plus pieces of legislation across our various states in the prior year and growing again this year have been primarily aimed at trans youth and athletics, including grade-school-age intramurals, where it's absolutely absurd to even do things by gender at that age. And so the, I think that we, whenever any of us have a chance to speak on behalf of young people, or create spaces for them to advocate for themselves on these issues inside our city, that we have to do it, and not rest on our laurels regarding, and we're not. But, you know, the, I just want to caution us, because what's happening to young people everywhere is happening here, too.
So I just want to jump in here real quick to sort of put you on the spot here, Billy. But as we're going into this recruitment phase, and you said you were a lifeguard in your past, one of the things that we're looking to do is find folks who have been a lifeguard, like that was one of their first jobs that they had, and it was important to them. Would you be willing to do an interview with us and do a little promotional video in helping us recruit lifeguards within our community? We can do a little interview with you to promote on our social media?
Absolutely. And I will also advocate for Sunblock. I mean, you can see what I look like. And, you know, Sunblock was not popular back then, then wow, did I get burned. So we got to protect our lifeguards, too, who are out there, you know, for so many hours. I'd be happy to.
Fantastic. And just to speak to the importance of sports and organize sports and play, and the way it can transform and save lives, right? Like, we really understand that being a part of a team or being able to play with your peers is essential for kids and teens and young adults, and even adults, to feel like they're welcome in a community, to feel like they have friendship, to feel that they could build those bonds with people. And there is a gigantic attack on that. For those of you who don't know me, like, I was somebody who was very active in sports. I was a disc golf player. I helped organize and bring the professional Disc Golf World Championships to the City of Pittsburgh in 2015. So I organized that. I served as their communications director for that, and I played in that. However, last year, the governing body stripped my ability to play that game, because I'm a trans woman. And I feel that as a person here, as an adult, I can't even, I don't even know how to look kids in the eyes and be like, I'm sorry, you can't play with your friends anymore. But that is what is happening across this country over and over and over. So that's why what we're seeing here and wanting to create, make sure our pools are safe, like, that's why I like, got excited about Billy being a lifeguard, because it's like, wouldn't it be great if like, our community, like we did with the AIDS crisis, just like we went line by line in Pittsburgh to remove non-voters, non-residents from the polls to protect our rights? Like, let's do it again and make sure our pools are safe to play. Let's make sure our sports leagues are safe to play. Let's make sure that we're doing everything we can for the kids in our community to have opportunities to thrive. Because it's not okay right now for us, and I'm a little passionate about it, obviously. But I think it's one of the things that our community has always done, time and time again, is take care of ourselves. And I think this is another opportunity for us to do so.
One of the facets of the PPS trans policy that I'm, well, I'm very proud of all of them, but one of them, especially as a high school coach, is our position around athletics. And our kids are guaranteed the right to compete with the team that best aligns with their gender identity, and by choice, and, you know, where they are at any given time. I recently had a conversation with our Director of Interscholastic Athletics, Karen Arnold, about a student that is gender fluid, and in different seasons feels different teams are appropriate for them. And we had a conversation around how she interpreted the policy. I agreed with her. And that kid will be able to do one sport one season with one team, and the next season do, if a different gender feels more appropriate for them, then that's the team that they'll go on. And this idea that athletes feel under attack by these laws and pieces of legislation throughout the country is absolutely accurate, as Maria has just so powerfully demonstrated. I, when we do our trainings around our policies with other teachers and other professionals, my colleagues always put me in charge of the coach, coaching and athletics PowerPoint slide. And this is a very personal issue for me as well. And, yeah, we're very, very dedicated to protecting the rights of the kids to play with the, to play at all, and to play with the group that best aligns with their gender.
Can I speak up about being a business owner? And I've had my store for like over 37
years. And I appreciate that I have created a safe space for our community. And I get very emotional, and I know I've shared this story with many of you before, it's a clothing store. And a mother came into my store and said, I've heard that your store is a safe space for my trans son. And every time I tell this story, I, it really reaches into me that how wonderful that I've been recognized in the community, that children can come in here and explore themselves, explore their gender identity, whatever you want to call it. But I make no judgments here. And I think it's important for our business community also to reach out and say that, that we are a safe space for everyone. And beyond what the city can say, I think the business community should be able to say that also. And I'm very proud, to be honest, commission, I'm very proud that we're having this discussion. But I'm also more proud that I've created a place where I'm very accepting of how children and adults can come in here and play. And it's Richard's Playhouse in that sense. But it's, my queer community is very important to me. And it's very emotional when they discover they found a place. Many years ago, well, actually, Billy Porter revealed this to me, that when he was in high school, he came to my store, and he, all of a sudden, found home. He found a place where he could explore himself. And that, just knowing that, that I helped one person, two people, three people, find a warm, accepting place, I think overall in our city, we should be talking to chambers of commerce, that we need to elevate and accept people in a way that they know that they will not be discriminated against.
Thanks, Richard.
I'd like to just update real quickly. The Human Rights Campaign, HRC, released an update yesterday, and there are 340 active pieces of anti-LGBTQ legislation, and almost half of them are specifically targeting the trans community. But the good news is, there is no active legislation in Pennsylvania. And we need to make sure that it stays that way, all of us as individuals, as well as understanding the impact that, that's, I mean, there were 250 bills total last year, so we've almost doubled that. I mean, that's horrible.
Councilwoman, are you good? Then Councilman Wilson, thanks for your patience. You have the floor. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Councilman. And thank you to everyone who has been serving on this board, and for all the work that you've been doing. I want to go back to number five, that everyone has, you know, I think you mentioned this part of the reason why we were here today. And that's the commitment from the city council to do what it can to ensure that the commission has all supports necessary to fulfill its mission. Because, you know, I believe that that's really how we're able to operate on this side, is to understand what, you know, what a commission has a full capacity, what their recommendations are, and how we can be impactful in the powers that lie on this side of the table. And, you know, so I'm really interested in what, you know, what are the gaps on the support?
Whoever wants to pursue, do you want to take this one?
Are you talking about number five?
Yes. Yeah, Councilman wishes to know how.
Ensuring the commission has all the supports necessary to fulfill its mission?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think some of the things we brought up here, we've discussed repeatedly. The, we got the staffing piece resolved, so that's a big step forward, and I expect we'll have some help for, you know, us. We've struggled with the issues of the liaisons with the Police Bureau and the public safety, which Councilman Crowe said he would help us with. But we've had some, we don't have a budget. We just learned this. I think Denise, would you mind speaking to that? Because that's a very serious lack.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, effectively, we have zero budget. What we've been designated is a partial staff position in Morgan, who is great. But, you know, specifically for incidentals, you know, if we wanted to print flyers or print brochures, there's zero dollars for that. So we're waiting right now to see if we can utilize the city's print shop. But, you know, it's almost impossible to try to move any mission forward with zero funding, even for the things that are unexpected. You know, if we invite somebody to come and speak to one of our outreach events, you know, we would have to, you know, maybe buy somebody lunch, or buy somebody dinner, or something. But just basic business work, you know, essentials, we just don't have it. And it's not coming for the remainder of 2023. So potentially, we could have some line items in next year's budget. So again, we're waiting on some information that says we can utilize some city services for things that we need immediately. You know, handout, Pride's coming. We can't have a table with no information on it. So that's where we are as of yesterday, Tuesday, yeah.
Okay. How much was allocated in the past to the budget? May I take that?
We, we don't really know exactly, because we just found out that money was allocated at the end of last year, or the beginning of this year, that we didn't know about and went back into the general fund. So, you know, anything could be good. You know, any small budget is fine. But, you know, as it stands, you know, I'm putting money in, and I know other people probably are as well, just to have the basic tools to run this organization.
And I could speak to the non-budget that we had for the advisory council. I actually had a fundraiser and donated money into the pot. And that money was used for when we did town halls to for when we did town halls to pay for food. The city did contribute to some printing, but there was zero budget for us to help do outreach to the public. And I know we want to create more town halls to reach out to the public in some way this year. And without even a minimal budget, it'll be difficult to do some of our work.
May I, Councilman?
You know, Sue, that you asked me to talk on the budget, but I would like to say one thing that we discussed at the mayor's meeting. You know, what makes a big difference is at every opportunity, the mayor's office, this commission lets people know that we're important as a community and as an organization, because people listen to you folks. They listen to the mayor's office. So, you know, every once in a while, you know, as we discussed at the mayor's meeting, you know, put your arm around us and let people know that we are important and that what we're doing in this community is important. And I think that goes a long way, not with just visibility, but with, you know, us letting people feel like it's safe to reach out for help and it's safe to bring up, you know, issues. So I went outside the boundaries there, Sue, but, you know, I forgot the question on budget.
Our boundaries are fluid. Another issue that, you know, has arisen...
Sue, if we're still on budget, I'd just like to add something to the conversation.
I'm sorry.
Okay? Thank you. And then we'll go to you. So, Councilman, when Mayor Perdido and I worked collectively to form the Commission, and forgive me, the earth escapes me, I was adamant about funding the Commission. And there was discussion around funding commissions in general and what the role of the city of that might be. But the mayor did see the wisdom in it at that time, and we did fund the Commission. I have our Budget Director unraveling the mystery of the money that was allocated to the Commission. But we did allocate, and I want to say it was $50,000. I'm probably wrong in that number. The second year that we budgeted for funding Commission, I was passionate, being a founding member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission, that that Commission be funded as well. And we had worked diligently with Alicia Carberry on making sure that Commission was funded. And the mayor brought a proposal to me that he could fund one, but not both. And so we agreed to split the funding between both Commissions for the second year. And I believe it went 25-25, if I'm not mistaken. That's how that went down. But new administrations, new times. This mayor, and I don't wish to speak for the mayor, but on a broader scale, is concerned about, as Mayor Perdido was, what is the role of the city to fund commissions? And if we can fund one, do we fund all? And that's a bigger discussion. But the fact that Council allocated the funds, the Council allocated the funds, and they cannot be reallocated or distributed unless it comes through Council. Now, could it possibly have come through Council in the context of a budget, and there was a reallocation that didn't see the Council's attention? That may very well could have happened. That's the mystery I'm trying to unravel here now. But the commitment was and remains, at least for the funding that was allocated, for that to remain allocated to the Commission. Then the broader conversation, and Maria, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, and I can speak to this as well in working with OMB on our side and trying to get a sense of sort of history of the budget for this Commission. You were right that there's been a variety of funding levels since its inception in 2020. But one of the things that was noted even prior to this administration, when there was budgets in 2020 of, I believe, about $55,000, and in 2021 for about $27,000 or so.
Okay, so I'm not off.
Yeah, so you were roughly close. But there was also never any drawdowns against those allocations. There was never any move to utilize those funds by the... So there's never any use of that money that we could discover. And since those funds weren't ever used or drawn down upon, the way that the budget for the city works is at the end of the year, all of that money then turns over into, as any unused funds will roll over, into the sort of the general fund for the cities, as unused funds go for the way the city works.
I think some of the confusion was around how the Commission might tap those funds and whether or not it was a, what's the reimbursement? Much like CDBG, funds are expended, then reimbursed, how that might be. But if I remember those correctly, and I don't in their entirety, if they were specific line items in the budget, they don't just automatically roll over to the general fund. They remain, whether they were expended or not.
It was general programming.
It was.
Funding is what it was noted as, is what we can understand in OMB.
So we need to revisit that.
Yeah, well, we need to do it right, because I don't want to leave this conversation with the idea that this Commission just simply didn't attempt to use the funds. We did not have access to them, either by process or by information. We just didn't, and we attempted to. And that's all I'll say about that.
And we can, as they say, provide the receipts. I mean, we've documented our various attempts to clarify some concerns. And when I look at how Council can support us, that sometimes when we're not getting what we need, we may need Council to help advocate for us to get the kind of attention to whatever our question is. With regard to the budget, I want to say something that happened last year is we were putting together a workshop that ultimately fell through, but we needed $100 to pay one of the speaker fees, and Councilman Crowell offered to cover that out of his district funds, because it was an important topic. And so really, for the rest of this year, that's a real opportunity. If you can help us cover things that we need to pay for while we're still working on the larger issues, we're not going to say no. But I wanted to also get to another gap, and this is, we actually have a solution in mind for this. We formed a working group. We would like to launch after this meeting, and we want to meet with each member of Council, and we'd like a commitment to either the counselor or a staff person to meet with us and talk this conversation in more detail, and look at how we can create mechanisms for communication to go back and forth. Because, you know, with the mayor, it's easier, because we can go through Morgan, Maria, or, you know, there's like a one person. But with nine different offices, that looks different. We mentioned earlier that we would like to be involved in LGBTQI input on legislation that isn't necessarily centric to our community. Well, how would we do that? How would we read the legislation? How do we stay on top of it? There's a lot of questions here. So we'd like to have, spend this year, in addition to our other work, is really meeting with Council and talking about that and seeing how that could look. I think one thing that's very unique about us is that we are actively trying to work with City Council as well as the mayor, that it's two different branches of our government equally important, and that our community needs to be plugged into City Council as well as the mayor's office. So I'm not going to put anyone on the spot right now. I hope that since you came here today, that you would be willing to work with us, but we'll be following up with you. And I'm willing to talk about it, of course, if you have questions on that. Any other gaps? Does anybody have something else to add?
Okay. I wanted, well, thank you for that. I wanted, you touched on it, development of communications between Commission and City Council. I want to be specific here, though, whenever a Councilperson is building, or maybe, you know, multiple Councilmembers are building legislation and creating a policy, you know, how can that communication happen with the Commission? Or how can it be an automatic thing? So for instance, I worked on several bills where, you know, we reached out to people that work in this space to, you know, to understand what should be included, and just wondering how the Commission can be alerted and, you know, can review either a policy. I mean, you bring up a good point with the Stop the Violence spending there, and how can that be reviewed by the Commission? Maybe it really starts with the initial legislation that created the trust fund, because I too like recognize that it was heavily focused on one specific, you know, area of where violence comes from. And, you know, whenever I brought up the conversation, like, well, you know, we should include this type as well. Actually, it wasn't what you mentioned, but it was similar. It was more dealing with people that are outside and experience homelessness. And so we were, so there was some pushback and then on that conversation, because some of the original people that were, you know, involved in making that legislation that created that trust fund, were like, well, no, it clearly says it's for gun violence, or clearly says it's for that. So we can, I think we can definitely, you know, 2023, because we can think more broadly on what violence is and how we can address it. But so to that point, like, how, I'm interested in that. Let's say anyone has an answer now, but how can there be some sort of automatic process that we can, you know, have that, I don't want to say it check, but yeah, how can we keep ourselves in check here so that we, you know, can be mindful of like every bill where there should be some, something that should be included to, you know, provide that support?
Council Wilson, you know, what I would say, it's amusing watching you all turn your heads back and forth as we're doing this. You know, right now, I would encourage anyone who wants that input to just reach out to the Commission. You can email us. We have our own email address. You can contact the chairs, and we can add anything to our conversation. We also can encourage members of the Commission to work with Council on areas of expertise. But in terms of how to do it automatically, I think that's what we're looking at with our working group, is because we can't read every single piece of legislation or every memo, every letter, or there's just, it's impossible timewise. And so that's what we have to figure out, is how do you know when it's something that we should weigh in on, and how do we know that it's something that is consistent with our goals and that we can work on? That's a very complicated question. But for now, I think you could just send it to us, and we could do the best that we can to get input.
I concur with Sue. It's complicated. I think that the responsibility for that also lies on us to, you know, to continue to monitor what's happening and to see what's going on and to weigh in where we know we can. I do offer myself to be a part of that conversation around violence, because that is something that continues to plague us as well. Majority of the crime is coming out of our community, so, and I would like to be a part of that conversation. So if you're having that, please call the black guy in the room at the table. I'd like to be a part of that.
So just to be clear, that we actually, so in terms of the grants, in terms of where actual dollars go on that fund, I think it definitely is in the direction of gun violence. But there is, I can't remember what the percent is. We just recently increased the percent of operating. Is that what we call it, operating costs? Operating budget? Where a majority, where all the funds for operating are going to, there might be like one position, but all the other positions go to, it's funded through Stop the Violence, and that funds the Office of Community Health and Safety. So, you know, there might be definitely some direct conversations there.
Okay.
Because they're working with everyone.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand a lot of the grants are restrictive. I get that, but there's got to be some equality with that.
I agree.
You know what I mean? There's got to be some equality across the board in the conversation of violence, you know what I mean? Yeah. Yes, I'm interested definitely in that.
Please.
May I have an interactive with Councilman Wilson? So one idea that comes to mind here, because yes, we like, we should be taking you up on your offer, and given that you're in unpaid volunteer positions, like, the burden should not be on you to do that work, right? So what comes to mind is the model that I think was aspirational but never fully acted upon in the last administration with the Office of Equity, and then the model to have a full-time or a half-time person in every department deputized as the equity person for that department could exist, I think, pretty easily in City Council, right? We have people whose job it is to review every piece of legislation that's introduced. Could we have a discussion about deputizing a person who works on the fifth floor to review it through the lens of equity when it comes to, you know, thinking about, even if we just started with LGBTQIA+ Commission, Gender Equity Commission, and, you know, others that we need to include there, so that there's an agreement that, you know, okay, there's a flag here, this can be a conversation, let's go to the designated person at the Commission and have a discussion.
When I came in, we had that position, I think.
Right.
I think one position.
Right, right, right. So could it happen again? Yeah, could we get back to that again? It doesn't, I don't think it has to be a full-time position. It could be a part-time position that, again, with someone who already exists on the hallway, and then get to the point where we're doing that with every department, too. So, you know, every department has someone who's reviewing the policies and everything that happens there through that lens to ensure that it's appropriate and equitable. I don't know, the words are escaping me right now, but that's the idea, just to float out there for having just sort of a spitball conversation here.
Yeah, I'm not bringing it up saying, like, oh, we tried it, that's it. I think that was right when I came in and learned about this position, and I think it went away, but I think, like most things, if you don't get it right the first time, there's a lot to learn of why that didn't work out.
Perfect is the enemy of the good. We just, we just try to do...
I love your sayings. I keep a book over here.
Get a life.
This is a really positive outcome, that we've come to you, and you're already looking at how to invest resources to address needs that we've brought to the table. And obviously, it's just a preliminary conversation, but that gives me some hope that, you know, we can continue to find solutions by having the dialogue. So thank you.
Definitely.
Councilwoman Warwick. Councilman, are you okay?
I just want to say, you know, in terms of finding solutions, there's been some effort to find solutions to, in Stop the Violence funds, to get funding, you know, to organizations that did have some barriers to, you know, some of the restrictions that we previously had with spending. And so your Commission, I think we should look at that as well. Like, there are, you know, some strings, there are some red tapes, some strings we can, especially if it's a policy we all agree on, how the money's being spent, there could be some, you know, some way that we could, you know, just like the district funds, there are, you know, less red tape to that, but it's transparent, it's on, it's on the agenda of how the money's being spent. So, you know, maybe we can work something out like that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have to say that I appreciate your responses and your willingness to be specific in how to support the Commission. I just have to applaud you for that.
Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, just on this, one thing, too, just an idea that might be helpful just at the district level, both in terms of understanding what's going on in our individual offices, right? Because there are nine, and that's a lot, right? But what's going on in our individual offices, and also communicating things to our districts, whether that be events or whatever, things that are going on, you know what I mean, to educate and bring out the public. Maybe an idea would be on the Commission to identify somebody from each district who would be like, I mean, that would be great, like a liaison in District Five who just happens to live in District Five. Well, then, you know, we can, and that way, the information's going back and forth. I don't know, it doesn't have to, you know, maybe a meet every couple of months or something like that, just to get the updates, and I call Richard.
Um...
He's gone, I missed him.
That's a great idea, though. Maybe we do. We might.
We probably do.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we probably do. I would, we're on about two hours. We have time. I'm happy to stay as long as you wish to stay. We might. We probably do.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we probably do. I would, we're on about two hours. We have time. I'm I'm happy to stay as long as you wish to stay. But at this stage of the game, if if members of the commission wish to make some closing statements or sort of, you know, last-minute advocacy's or sort of pull our conversation together, I just want to provide the opportunity for you to do so.
Well, since I've been talking so much, I'm going to just jump in with one specific thing. We mentioned that the Pride Month proclamation. And historically, it has often been focused around the initial Pride Fest and the organization sponsoring that event. And there's no reason not issue a proclamation. But for Pride Month, it's a lot more than Pride Fest or one organization. It is a whole month with lots of different components. And we are specifically asking that when you start to draft this year's proclamation that you work with the commission so that we can ensure that it's, you know, representative without taking away from any individual proclamations that you may want to issue on behalf of certain events or organizations or anything like that. So that's a very specific request, and whoever's going to take the lead on that, if they would reach out to the commission, we will be willing to work with you.
Sue, I think the tradition
It's a reasonable thing to do.
I think the tradition is generally the council president at the time, I think. But we can work collectively with that, and I think that's a great recommendation and a great suggestion.
Let's also include Coming Out Day in October in that whole proclamation piece.
Well, it's Trans Day of Remembrance and and Trans Visibility Week. I I think that's also really important to acknowledge and uplift.
Yes.
Maybe we can do a collection of, I hate to say bullet points, but must-have recognitions within the proc so that we can have a foundation to work from would be very helpful. Billy, anything?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll say, I'll just say this much, just thank you so much for this this opportunity. And I think that I believe that all the commissioners would agree that the the most important aspect of this is to create an apparatus of communication and that we will, all the things that we've brought forward and talked about have potential for better outcomes, not perfect necessarily, but better better outcomes.
Striving for the good.
And without without working on those communication avenues that we will develop, we probably won't do what we otherwise could have.
My my hope for this was really, you know, as I stated earlier on, to put faces with names, you know, that we're not these abject entities that exist somewhere out there, but, you know, we we're human beings, you know, we have, you know, need for, you know, connection and communication and cooperation and achievement. And and so my role in city council will slowly diminish over the next 10 months as I exit my my time here. And so my my hope was really to to lay a foundation with the commission and the council in building this ongoing relationship that will live long past my tenure here, and that this was just step one and just a beginning of of communication, communication and cooperation and, you know, collective companionship for years and years to come. And and I hope we we planted that seed today. That was that was my sincere hope, and I think we achieved that.
Thank you, Dr. Kraus.
Thank you. My pleasure, really. Anything else from our digital friends that that joined us via Zoom today?
Can we add on the record that this is the probably first post-agenda focused on LGBTQ specific issues? Is is that correct?
You just put it on the record.
It's on the record.
Yeah, by stating it, you put it on the record.
Can we have lunch next afternoon?
So we're good. So with that, I will close it. I want to sincerely thank everyone for making the effort to spend a couple hours with us this afternoon. I know how busy we all are, but this was this was very important, and I appreciate especially members that took the time to spend the afternoon with us. And with that, I'm going to ask if we may have a motion to adjourn the post-agenda.
I'm ready.
And there we are. We're out. Thanks.